Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order due to the governor statewide disaster declaration relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and current public health guidelines for social distancing. I have determined that it's not prudent for the members of the village board or staff to convene in person for tonight's meeting. Therefore, the members of the village board are attending the meeting by video conference, the same conditions requiring barring access to the public for in-person attendance. In light of these limitations, the public is invited to attend and listen to the meeting through the Zoom platform or by phone as indicated in the meeting agenda to comply with the Open Meetings Act requirements for virtual meetings. Tonight's meeting is being recorded. And Michelle, if you would mind taking attendance and making sure everyone can be heard, that would be greatly appreciated.
Trusty Braski, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. One clear.
Trusty Kritzmeyer, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
I can hear you. Trusty Michelle, can you hear me?
Right, Kent, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Trusty O'Connor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, that's great.
Trusty, or Trusty O'Reilly, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. And Trusty Tanucci, can you hear me?
I can see and hear.
Thank you.
All right. If we could all say a pledge allegiance, that would be appreciated. A pledge allegiance. All right, welcome everyone to Tuesday, February 8th, our first February board meeting. We have the first item in the agenda is the homeowners associations. Martin Lakes, Ron Kingsley, or anyone from Martin Lakes here? Victorian Oak Estates, Carol, Carol Levin. All right.
Do we send reminders to these folks?
Yep, that's what Greg, we talked about the last time. We've been doing it and we're trying to make sure the list is up to date too. There's a work in progress on that right now, but yes.
Oh, great. That means they don't care.
Well, I don't know. I mean, who knows? It could be busy, so. Let's move on to the next item of the agenda, which is public comment. And is there any, any public comment tonight? All right, we're moving right along. Sergeant Ryan Amber, you, you just popped on the video. It's great to see you. How are you?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Good, good. We have you on the agenda right now. You're on, you're next.
I just got home from work, so now I'm going to do this. I really have not much new. I talked to Greg last week about an incident and other than that, we're doing pretty well. No new cases on the golf course, so that has subsided.
That's about it. So have there been any extra patrols or are the homeowners being more vigilant or just?
Probably a combination of both. I mean, the extra patrols were put in place usually for incidents like that. They're extended for longer periods of time, you know, that someone is just going to be out of town and wants us to keep an eye on their house. So and I'm sure they made security more aware of the problem there too. So hopefully they're keeping an eye on it also.
And maybe, maybe, maybe our communications actually helped. I'm just trying to like.
Yeah, no, I agree. I monitor, like, we get critical reaches from other surrounding agencies and Lake Forest has been having similar ones to that as well, where there's communities with, you know, walking paths that go behind homes or, you know, anything like that. So this crew, I'm guessing, has moved, moved east, so. Anybody have anything for me?
Appreciate everything, Ryan.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, if there's nothing, Ryan, we're going to let you go. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Yeah, anytime. You guys have a great night.
Thank you.
Hey Bobby, thank you. I got your email and someone's going to come pick that stuff up tomorrow.
Okay, super.
Should they come to your office or the village hall?
At my office.
Okay, thank you.
Can't believe you're giving them cookies. Oh, boy. I'm just kidding, Ryan.
I know you are.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. We're going to keep us ourselves moving here and the, the next item on the agenda is consideration resolution approving or appointing John Marshall to the Village of Long Grove Architectural Commission. So as you, as you probably know, John Marshall was on the Architectural Commission before. John Marshall was a trustee. He saw our, our advertisement in the newsletter and he contacted me, he applied and he wants to volunteer again. And so.
I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah.
Would you like a motion?
Uh, well, can I say a few more words? But so Jean, Jean Sylvester interviewed him too, and she's like, he's perfect. I mean, he is everything we're looking for, plus he has all the experience. So yeah, it sounds like you're going to support me in my my appointment. He definitely has the skill set and wants to do it. So yes, I'm looking for a motion.
I, I move that we recommend, recommend appointing John Marshall to the Village Architectural Commission.
Second. Hold on a second. So moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee O'Connor, right? Did I get that right?
That's fine.
Was that good?
Yep.
We're all excited. We all want a second.
Yeah, I think.
All right, roll call, please.
All right, trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trusty O'Connor.
Hi.
Trusty Braski.
Hi.
Trusty Michelle.
Hi.
Trusty O'Reilly.
Hi.
And trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is referral of a proposed storage place right at Lake Cook in 53. And I think Greg's going to tee this one off for me. And we, we've got the petitioner here as well, so.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Doug Olson's here this evening. He's the owner of the property at 2798 Route 53 in Long Grove. I sent out communication to the village board about our economic and community development activity in advance of the information that was even put in the package. So you probably received this information twice. It's a, the piece of property there is kind of unique. It's, it's a triangle type of piece of property at the northwest corner of Route 53 and Lake Cook directly across the street from the Menards. It currently is zoned residential, R2. It sits in the Tiff District. Mr. Olson is proposing, or would like to bring to the attention of the board and have referred to the planning commission a proposal for a storage facility at that location. I've provided the board with some information and some renderings as well as the memo from Mr. Olson. This property is unique in that the access would be a right in, right out. There's another piece of property to the north and another piece of property in unincorporated Palatine to the west. And with that being said, I would turn it over to Mr. Olson to make his brief presentation and answer any questions that the board may have. Doug, thank you for being here.
Evening. Thank you very much for having me and this opportunity to present. Ultimately, I just wanted to double check. Can you all hear me?
We can, Doug, yeah. Thank you for being here.
Okay, so um, the property has been in the family for over 20 years. It's a property that is pretty unique in the fact that there's not a lot you can do with it that is feasible with the intersection so close for Lake Cook. We are in the industry of both construction and self-storage. So we have done many redevelopments, many ground up buildings. We do operate self-storage right now. The facility that we're looking to put there is a, what we call modern self-storage where it's it's got all the technology, the bells and whistles, you know, it's, it'll be the most advanced in the area, probably in the, you know, in a pretty good areas in terms of what it offers with Bluetooth locks, all the security, the level of the finishes on the inside. You know, ultimately, our goal is to, to make a facility that the possessions that you have can, you know, maintain their quality. They're not affected by humidity or rodents or any type of of anything that you wouldn't find in your home, pretty much. And so what we found is that based upon the shape of this property, based upon the location of it and, you know, the, the limited access, you know, we feel it would be a good solution for this property to, to develop. We also feel that it adds a value to the area because right now you have Menards across the street, which is, you know, a great development and you have a lot of outlots sitting there, but you don't have a lot of things that are being developed in those outlots. And, and so although this is, you know, for lack of a better term, the gateway into Long Grove, it's, it's still kind of undeveloped per se. And so our goal would be is to, you know, have a facility that presents well is like shape or like look as the Menards facility. So that way, you know, you're not, you know, trying to bring something ultra-modern or, or, you know, something that doesn't fit with the local area. We're trying to really blend in and make a nice entrance into the Long Grove area. You know, there's a lot of details that we put in the, in the paperwork that we submitted. I'm not sure if there's any particular questions you want to look at or, you know, how much more information you're looking, you know, for me to present at this time.
If I can add one thing, Mr. Olson's partner is his brother. His brother is a longtime resident of Long Grove. So also has a deep belief in the character and maintaining the character of Long Grove. And that's what was conveyed to us when the concept plan was presented and was is also interested in contributing back to the community as well as, you know, we had some discussion about potential monument signs, which I know Trustee O'Reilly and I have been talking about and for some other things, looking at signs that would display, you're properly displaying the community and the entrance in the community. And Mr. Olson and his partners have talked about working with us on that as well, so.
So any questions from the, from the board?
I have some question regarding the aesthetics. Or are you, would you be open to a different kind of exterior, something that's a little more Long Grove and a little less warehouse looking?
We are open to, you know, getting the feedback of what it is that Long Grove is looking for. We haven't picked an exact finish on the exterior for that reason. We had, we've done a couple of different rendering versions over, you know, this process and the one that was presented to you was the one that that we feel kind of blends in a little bit more with the Menards as some of the other renderings that we'd done earlier. And so, you know, and when it comes to what that finish, that final product looks like on the exterior, we don't have a, a set in stone. It's got to be this way. We're really looking for feedback from, you know, people like yourself that, you know, want to see a certain look or, or don't want to see a certain look. And so we don't make those decisions, you know, by ourself.
Yeah, thank you. That, that would thrill me.
Sure.
You know, I, I think I'll speak for just myself. It's in a Tiff, so something sales tax revenue producing would be fabulous. But this is, to me, it's really a, a passive traffic kind of entity and probably not a bad spot for it. Something, I would just like something a little prettier.
Sure. And there, we've had some discussions about the idea of, of, you know, what that potential monument sign or the call it a gateway sign, you know, of Long Grove, how that could tie into the, the look and feel of the building, you know, possibly doing some landscape details or or even possibly some, you know, berms per se, you know, something that, you know, gives a little bit more of a softer feel rather than just a hard shell building.
Yeah, super.
So I had the benefit of participating in a little bit of review on this in advance and I got to ask a few questions. And the one thing that I didn't hear come out is that the garage doors will be not facing towards Long Grove. It'll be facing the opposite way. And so the way the terrain is, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, it'll be almost like a walkout facing to the west, right? So we won't see that. It'll be, the height will be smaller on the Menard side, if you will, and on the Lake Cook side, so.
Correct. And so the, the design is to ultimately make the building parallel 53. So that way, you don't see behind it from 53 or from Lake Cook because of it's got a slight angle there. And then we'd also be able to, like you said, we'd have the, the back would be the only place there'd be exterior roll-up doors and it would only be on the lower level. And then, like, it would be more of that walkout basement style. So there would be only the lower level on the northwest corner of the property that would have doors. So anything from the street, you wouldn't really see the roll-up doors.
So if, if I was traveling from the west over the water toward old 53, toward, toward new and new 53, east, eastbound. I, because of the, the foliage that's there, we would, we would only see the roll-up doors or not see those.
Roll-up doors will only be on the lower level, which will be, you know, oh, probably a little bit lower than the ground is now. And so it'll, you know, it should be hidden by the existing landscape of the property behind us, which is kind of a wetland type of area. So we don't expect that landscape to change in the future. We don't expect the, the the doors to really be a big visible, you know, from either, even from Lake Cook going east. We think that, you know, you're you might see one or two here and there, but it won't be just a big line of doors. We don't envision.
I see. That's great. Because it's really kind of attractive. So as it is, you know, traveling network, so.
Can I wear my finance hat?
Please do.
Because the tip, obviously the Tiff District, we, you know, we'd like to see that developed and have, you know, have it look improved and, and be improved. And that's lovely. It's unfortunate that it's not as much sales tax. Since you do sales and you do self-storage in other areas, what would be ideal compliments to be in the vicinity with that? That might have more attractive sales tax potential, in your opinion?
Well, the way we view it is we view this as a personal utility. It's something that throughout people's lives, you end up using at some point in your life. Some people use it as a way of life all the time. Some people use it to store, you know, whenever there's a death or, or divorce or some sort of event in life that causes, you know, unexpected move where, you know, you need to vacate a property, you know, so there's a lot of different reasons for using this. And so it's not high traffic where you're going to have 100 people a day, but it is something that brings people to the area. And so what we found right now, the, we have a facility in Sycamore and that facility was an old grocery store that was converted into storage, but there's also a family dollar in the building. And there's also a, a laundromat in the building. And so by, you know, doing this development with a storage behind those other properties or those other tenants, it actually brought life to that side of the, of town per se in terms of, you know, the building is full. There's, there's activity every day. There's been increase in terms of sales at the family dollar, which was there for many years beforehand. And so, you know, it just kind of, it, it takes a part of town that might not have a lot of attraction or a lot going on and makes it something that people go to. And it might not be, you know, for the point of shopping, but when they're there and they go, oh, we need something from Menards. Let's, let's go grab it or, you know, you'll see something, you know, sometimes it'll be some sort of specialty shops, you know, something that, you know, you don't want to drive across town just for that, but, you know, if you're going to be, you know, at the storage facility, you know, and you're going to stop by and, and do some other things along the way also. So it, it, it does, you know, it's hard to say what's, what's going to complement it, you know, exactly, just because every neighborhood is a little bit different, but you know, what we see is that, you know, it's, it's what we call a personal utility. It's something that people use. It's something that they go to. It's almost like a gas station. You need to go to it. And when you're there, you get a candy bar or you get, you know, something along the way and and, and that's kind of, you know, the way that we, you know, view this.
So maybe a, a gas station or a convenience store or a, you know, a kind of fast food-ish, if you will, or Dunkin' Donuts or something would lend itself? I'm not putting, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I'm trying to think out loud based on what you just said.
Sure, sure. Ultimately, you know, if you are bringing people to an area, you know, now you have more people coming there, right? And so what is, what happens, you know, Menards might see an increase in their sales just because of, you know, there's, there's another business nearby. And then, you know, what, what is going to go in the outlaw of Menards is really, you know, a wide range of opportunities there. It'd be great to see Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, you know, just because, you know, you end up getting a lot of, of people coming through, you know, spending their, their $10 or $12 and, you know, going on to, you know, shop at the stores adjacent to them.
All right, one last question and then I'll quit pestering a bit. What else did you consider for that property? You've had it for 20 years.
So originally we were hoping that we'd be able to acquire some more property on which we'd be able to put a retail development there, you know, back in, you know, 20 years ago, every corner was, you know, hoping that they're going to get a Walgreens or CVS or, you know, Rite Aid, depending which part of the country you're in. And so it, you know, it was purchased for the, for the hopes of being able to do more than, than obviously be, you know, residential property. Over the, you know, the years, we've, we've come to realize that, you know, acquiring the property around, it's not really an option. And so we've really looked at what can we do there? We've looked at retail, the problem with retailers is, you know, usually it's a, it's a little bit more traffic and you got a lot more, you know, people potentially crossing, you know, southbound traffic on 53 to, to get in. So having a right turn in, right turn out, it works for the storage. It's a little bit harder with, with, you know, like a retail. The other thing is, is the property slopes, you know, the elevations change quite a bit. And so, you know, if you do build something that's a single story building, there's a good chance that you're going to be, you know, pretty low in, in relation to the actual road. And that's why, you know, this kind of works because, you know, it does raise up a little bit out of the ground, but it also goes in the ground. And so, you know, it, it's something that you know, Walgreens did, doesn't work, you know, and so, you know, that, that, that type of strip mall that, you know, might be kitty corner, you know, it would be hard with the elevations and, and the limiting, you know, in and out on it.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. That helps me understand much better. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Abby, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I'm just picking up on, on Ann's thought. Is there any opportunity for a gas station anywhere on that area, that corner, that side of, of old 53?
I'm, I'm sorry, are you asking me or are you asking?
I'm asking either you or Greg or.
Um, I'm, I don't know what is required for a gas station. Usually, you know, from my experience, I've seen a lot of special use requirements you know, just because of the proximity to residential.
Trustee O'Reilly, to, to go on that too, we've, we've had some, Amanda from Mondeleine had expressed to us that there's a potential for Thorntons to look at us. They think that might be a good location on one of those outlets adjacent to where this proposed facility would go. Certainly, I think, and, and I think some of the other board members would probably concur, including yourself, that that, that area would be ideal for, for a gas station or potentially ideal for a gas station if it's done right. So we're in the process of, of trying to coordinate a meeting with those representatives from Thorntons that could give us some insight as to what they're looking. And if those potential outlets right there at Lake Cook or 53 would, would serve their purpose and serve the village well.
Well, especially with the light there.
Yep.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anybody else?
I just had a question. So there's a house there. I don't, I, I couldn't tell exactly where this was going on 53. So can you explain where the entrance and the exit would be? Is that, there's that rental house there? Is that your property?
Do you want me to show something? Is it, does it help if I bring this map up? Can I do that?
Yeah, I was hoping for a map, but I, I could see the, the setup, but I, and I could see the Google map, but I couldn't put them together.
Yeah, let me see if this works. Let me zoom in a little bit, right? So you want to guide me through this a little bit? This is the house right here? Is this right here?
Right, that's the house.
Correct. And so the, the property comes, you know, the shape of the property is a triangle. And when it gets to the Lake Cook and 53 intersection, it's ultimately the tip. There's really no width at Lake Cook. And so if you were to take that red dot and go directly north per se, that would kind of give you an idea of the shape of you know, where the, yeah, going straight up, yeah, pretty much the, the house, there's not much room between the house and the back of the property. And so and then, you know, in terms of a triangle, the building that we're proposing would start about where the house is at and, and go towards the north. And the inlet into the property would be right at the very tip of the north, call it the north, you know, east corner of the property. So there'd be a right turn in, right about where those trees are at, just on the south side of those trees, it would be a right turn in and right turn out. And so it's the farthest possible distance away from Lake Cook Road.
That's great. That was one of my concerns. So if you were a truck, are they going to have to, and they're hauling like a, a big moving truck that is going to store stuff, they'll have to go in to Menards and turn around and come out and turn in? Is that the thought?
If they're coming from the south, that would probably be the, the logical process for them. If they're coming from the north or, you know, coming, you know, down 53, then they could turn directly in without having to go around.
Okay. Um, that's great. I was worried it was going to be too close to the wa, the water and the point and it would just get really clunky. So I like that it's further north. Thank you. Thank you.
Did the drawing of the triangle, it wasn't me, so.
So I have a couple of questions and
I did.
Jenny
Good job.
Actually anticipated one of my questions. So for traffic coming northbound, of course, they can't turn in and I understand why, you know, went back upside the Lake Cook. But that means people are going to turn into Menards and make a U-turn. And I can envision that that's going to create all kinds of problems. As someone who lives in a subdivision where there are tons of U-turners creating problems with less traffic than we'll see at that Menards entrance. So do we have any other options for northbound traffic other than making U-turns at the Menards entrance?
I'm not sure we have the choice, Kent. I mean, I don't know if anybody listened into the Arlington Heights Open House last week or whenever it was weeks ago. They're creating a U-turn on, in there, in that area also because of the bottleneck just south of the McDonald's and the shell there. But this isn't our road. I don't, to me, I'm not, I acknowledge the challenge. I just, I don't know that.
Well, I have another thought there, man, and that is it's, it's the volume of the traffic. It's not going to be really large, right? So because typically you're going to put your stuff in there and leave it. So I think the, where it's a bigger concern is where you have a high volume. And I would ask Doug to comment on that, but I, I think the volume of the traffic won't be super huge, right?
Correct. So the volume that we see on a, on a normal day right now is, you know, during the week is, is pretty low. If you're getting, you know, maybe three or four people a day, maybe 10 people a day. Depending on the, the day of the month, you know, obviously people move in and move out of different things in the beginning and end of the month mostly. And so you see a little bit more traffic, but you're, you're not going to see, you know, 100 cars a day. You're not going to see 50 cars a day. You'll, you know, it's something that's going to be a lot a lot lower volume. And, you know, you will see some that will come, you know, potentially every day. You know, we have people that do that now where they come, you know, every day, every couple of days, you know, it's something they almost use, use the facility like a closet or, or, you know, to, you know, I'm, we, we actually have a campground not far away and there are people that, that live on the campground in, in their RVs and and they, they come and they rotate out, you know, their different, different season of, of decorations or clothes or whatever it is that, that is you know, not able to be stored, you know, at their RV. But, you know, it, it's not something where you're going to have a large number of people coming and going. And even, you know, when it comes time to move, you know, there's, you know, there, there's times that we have four or five people moving in at a time, but you know, that, that's probably going to be the busiest that we'd expect to really ever see it at one time. So it'll be, you know, more of that, you know, ones and twos at a time type of thing.
Well, I think the other mitigating factor for the turning is there are, there are two entrances to Menards. There's that northern one and then the southern one where the light is. It doesn't really have to be a U-turn. They can come in, make a left turn, go around and come out again. Either way, so. Either way, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think if, if the users of the facility are coming from the north, they'll figure out pretty quick that that's a, not a bad way around, or I'm sorry, coming from the south.
So.
You know, the more they, the more they visit, the more they'll figure out that's a way around.
The other thing that, that we do see a lot is this is people that live in the area. You're not getting people that, you know, live, you know, fifty miles away coming very often. Most of the people are, you know, people that live within a three mile radius. And so, you know, people that live within a three mile radius, you know, they have a sense of how best to get in and out of where they're going. Because it's roads that they travel, you know, every day. And so we don't see a lot of issues with, with the turning being a factor. The only uh, potential question would be is if you have, you know, say for example, relocation company or over the road semi coming in with a moving company that isn't familiar with this facility, then, you know, they might be the ones that, you know, aren't really sure how to get in. But we, we expect that, you know, most of the people that'll be renting the facility will, will be pretty familiar with the, the traffic patterns of the area.
Kent, did that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Um, there really aren't any good answers, although the shortcut between the two Menards entrances is the best way to go. I don't know that we can encourage that because that's Menards property, right? But if I was a driver, that's the way I would go.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so yeah, I think the question is answered as best as we can answer tonight. I do have one other question. Um, in the letter to the board, there's a Q and A section, number five, talks about environmental impacts. Uh, will the footprint of the building, uh, impact any wetland areas or other sensitive areas?
Hmm, no, the, the plan is to have the building, you know, relatively close to the road in terms of the, you know, um, keeping it as far away from the water as possible just for the, the soil conditions. And when I say close to the road, we're looking at probably about a thirty-five foot setback is, is what we budgeted. We don't know that until we, we figure out what exactly the zoning requirements are gonna be. But, you know, in, in doing the layout, if we, if we stay thirty-five feet off the road, you know, it puts us still in a pretty high part of the ground existing today. And so we won't be really close to any of that. And the, the road or the, the drive that goes around the back for the, the entrances on the backside of the building is not planned to get near that either. It's planned to also have an offset off of the, uh, property, you know, the back property line.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have, uh, comments? Chris, yep?
Thank you. I agree with Rita in as much as we can, um, architecturally make it more Long Grove-esque versus warehousey. That would be great. Um, I don't see residential in this spot. I just don't see, I think it's just too loud, too noisy. And right in, right out, it's gonna make it real tough to do a lot of residential in here. So, um, I'm not opposed to the use. I think, you know, I think it's a, could, kind of a good low volume use for that space. Um, did have a question for Doug. I did see in some of the documents that there was a comment about in the future, maybe having trucks and like a moving truck storage facility in the backside of this thing or parking trucks in back. Um, not sure if it's a question, just, I'll maybe I'll make a comment, not really in favor of that. I don't really see us as being a outdoor truck storage, uh, community, but, uh, but that's just my personal comment. And, uh, with that, I'll just make a motion to refer this to the planning commission and, uh, and move it forward.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by trustee Barowski, seconded by trustee O'Reilly, and that's a roll call. Michelle, if you'd be so kind.
Uh, trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeier.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Doug, thank you. Thanks for bringing this forward. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, the next item on the agenda is, is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the use of MFT funds for the twenty-twenty-two road paving program. And I think, Jeff, as we talked the last time, the first step in order to go out the bid is we need to declare that we're gonna use MFT funds for whatever portion of the project that we want to use those funds for, right?
Yep, yep. And again, this is just to get the authorization to use the funds, doesn't commit the village to using them, but we have to go through the process with the folks at IDOT to get this passed so that they can, um, uh, update their records accordingly as well.
So any, any questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Uh, moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by, was that trustee Micho? Yep, thank you. Roll call, please.
Uh, trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeier.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Um, Jeff, I think you're in the hot seat on this next one, right? The, uh, MS-four storm sewer report that, uh, we've got to provide or do.
All right, so as part of the Illinois EPA permitting requirements, the Village of Long Grove has a municipal separate storm sewer system, MS-four for short. And one of the requirements to remain in compliance is to have an annual presentation of the report to the village board. So, uh, tonight I have Carolina Cho, uh, with our office here to actually go through that. She's the one that does a lot of the, the legwork on this. So I would like to turn that over to her to, uh, give a brief presentation.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Thanks for letting me do this presentation. I'll, uh, make it quick and try not to get too technical here, but this is just gonna be an overview of the system, kind of where we're at, uh, permitting wise and, yeah, just general overview. So just to get started here.
Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Do you need me to move to the next slide or?
Yeah, is it, is it easier for me to share my screen and shift the slides or do you want to, you could do it if you want to?
Just tell me when you want to move.
All right, awesome. Yeah, that's great. So this picture is just a, a good depiction of what the stormwater system really is. It's basically collecting all the water from our impervious surfaces and eventually that water drains to some sort of water body. So whether that's a stream, a lake, river, uh, it's not treated prior to that. So the focus of the MS-four program therefore is to maintain this water as best as possible, uh, prevent it from getting polluted because it's not treated. So there's a permit that goes along with this, obviously, and that's typically renewed every five years. So the last permit was released in twenty-sixteen. Uh, this year, technically last year, would have been the release for the renewed permit. Um, and the EPA has not yet come out with that. So we're waiting for that to still be produced by them. Uh, they released it for a public comment back in September. We made a few comments on it and still haven't heard anything back. So once that's renewed, we'll let the community know. Um, and then we'll write a new stormwater management plan for the community. But until then, this presentation includes some of the potential changes that we saw based on the public comment that we were uh, given the opportunity to see the permit in, in September. So next slide. So there's six minimum control measures. The main ones that Gaywalt assists with um, are the illicit discharge detection and elimination and the pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. So you can go to the next slide. Thank you. So one of the new potential metric requirements is regarding the illicit discharge detection and elimination. Uh, basically, they just want us to log our procedures more thoroughly for how we're inspecting outfalls, stream banks, basins. Um, and that's their, their main concern that we're maintaining a map of those locations and things of that nature. Next slide. Um, another one is for public education and outreach. So posting things like this poster on the right, for example, or, uh, having presentations like this at board meetings or presentations to other groups such as homeowners associations, uh, other groups that might be interested or might also put out some sort of newsletter to their community, uh, or their specific neighborhood regarding stormwater pollutants, you know, keep the storm drains clear of leaves, things along those lines. Next slide, yep. Um, another new match requirement for pollution prevention. The main change here is they want to keep track of municipal facilities that are owned by the municipality. Um, and that's the main change. They also want, and that's an example of the MS-four covered area map, which Gaywalt has for Long Grove, but they just want that to be updated yearly. Um, and regarding inspections and the municipal facility and stormwater control inventory, there's not much change there. There just was a little bit of a change in the verbiage. And then that next slide. So finally, the public involvement and participation. Um, they want to ensure that everyone's involved in some sort of watershed work group, which Long Grove is a part of the DR double, DRWW, which is the Des Plaines River watershed work group. And I attend the member meetings for that, um, for the, on behalf of the village. Um, so we're in compliance there and there shouldn't be any issues with that. So if anyone has any questions regarding the new permit or, um, anything about MS-four that I can answer.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Um, you, you mentioned several times about education and public awareness and so forth. Um, this isn't gonna get into the schools, is it?
No, no, it's mostly, a lot of times it's covered in like a newsletter that's sent out or, uh, something, just a poster that's in, posted in a public place, like a community center or things of those nature. It's not, not school related.
Okay, cause our, our, our schools aren't doing well and they don't need any more, more crap put in them. Um, but I, I would be interested in any kind of graphic that you could provide us that we could do on social media or, or in our own newsletter to keep people aware of, of the, the things that they do in their own homes, outside and so forth, that, that is detrimental i- i- in, in the big picture.
Yeah, okay, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bill, can you?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, sorry. Uh, can you highlight, highlight slide number four for a moment, please?
Yep.
All right, that is the biggest dog poop proportionate to the dog's body I've ever seen. So I hope we don't have too many of those sitting around, but, uh,
See.
It really, really is. All right, so, so here's, I'm sorry, here's my, uh,
Good attention to detail.
I'm anxious.
Are you sure that's what that is? I guess it is, yeah.
I had just one big old steamer, that's all I can say. Um, so actually kind of slide two where, you know, you talk about all the runoff, you know, I, I really didn't realize until this moment that like, uh, a big parking lot runoff goes right into the stormwater, which ends up going right into the streams, you know. So when I think about that, I think about a Menards, right? Or maybe a future development that, that, that's that big too. Is there anything we could do to mitigate that upstream before it ends up into that stormwater channel? Like, you know, I mean, thinking of big parking lot like Menards, wouldn't it have been good if we could have done something to, to mitigate, if there's any mitigation possible. So just a hypothetical question. Um, lastly, um, Ms. Cho, you mentioned you represent us at the DRWW meetings. Do you ever issue a report on those meetings or anything that gives us an update or a couple of meeting minutes or anything, or should we not ask you that question?
No, it's all right. There's actually a meeting upcoming. I think it's either next week, it's, it's sometime in the next few weeks, but I didn't, I'd started back in August. So I haven't had the opportunity to attend those. I think I attended maybe one previously. But this meeting I do plan to take notes and send out to, we have a few communities who are part of that watershed work group. So I'll send it out to all the communities, the notes that I take, and then, um, can also attach the meeting minutes to that as well.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thanks, uh, that's all I had, Bill.
Well, but the other question didn't get answered and I'm wondering.
Well, I don't know if it's a question, it's just a thought, really.
Well, no, but I think we do that as part of the planning when, when those things are built. And I don't know if Jeff or Carolina, if you're the right person to answer that.
Yeah, sure, I'll jump in. So are there things that we can do? Yes. And are there things that, uh, we are required for developers to install? Yes. The Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance has, uh, requirements that speak directly to that. And there's certain triggers that, um, you know, thresholds that you have to provide this level of protection, you know, and the next and the next and the next. Uh, sometimes it's based on the amount of impervious areas. Sometimes it's based on the, um, number of parking stalls. Sometimes it's based on the use of the property hydro, like if you have, uh, a gas station, you're automatically required to put hydrocarbon removal technology in, in your plants. Usually it's, usually it's something in the most downstream manhole, uh, before the water discharges to a detention basin. Uh, you know, there's different technology and the watershed development ordinance requires a removal rate of seventy percent of your hydrocarbons. So we, we always get, uh, fun, um, studies and paperwork that we can read through to be sure that they're meeting the seventy percent. Uh, so, so we have to do that. The stormwater detention basins, um, they can also use as a, be used as a secondary treatment before, you know, that water eventually gets released out of that detention basin and, uh, further downstream, whether that be a stream or a wetland or anything like that. So, um, yeah, the, the county watershed development ordinance addresses that and, uh, we're very in tune and sensitive on that when developments are, are proposed and reviewed.
Does that address the salt?
It does not get in, into salt. It, um, the watershed development ordinance is, like I said, the hydrocarbons and, uh, the new thing is, uh, total suspended solids in the, in the water.
The, the salt issue is more of, um, there's like good housekeeping training, um, or pollution prevention training that is typically done at least by those that maintain the roads. And I don't know, it depends on who's contracted to plow, you know, like a Menards parking lot or things of those nature. But that's just more of a, an awareness thing, you know, don't, don't just go dumping piles of salt in, in the parking lot. It's, it's more on the educations, like a prevent before it can even happen thing than it is on a filtering side on the other end, if that makes sense.
Can I add on to something Chris asked?
Oh, please do, Anne.
It just, in terms of the, I mean, and, and you answered it, Jeff, that there are minimum standards and you're very much, um, in, attuned to all of that. It, are there better than minimum opportunities and are they hugely expensive and are they, you know, are they like sunscreen where twice as much only gets you five percent better or, you know, kind of i- is there a curve like that? Um, or the minimum standards are, there really is nothing explored north of that.
Well, um, as you may, as you may.
Was I confusing?
No, no, no. Uh, just kind of gathering a couple of thoughts here in my head. Uh, as you would suspect, uh, a lot of developments come in and, you know, no offense to developers, but, you know, they do like to, uh, shoot for that minimum. Uh, we always ask for, uh, if additional treatment options can be explored and added because then you get into what's called a, a treatment train. So, you know, if the stormwater has to run through a series of these types of, uh, devices, you know, the downstream manhole, the detention basin, and if we can go through something like a bio swale, you know, that's where you get more removal and you're, you're exceeding that seventy percent for hydrocarbon and you're, uh, allowing more of the suspended solids to filter out before you enter a creek, river, wetland. So we always ask for that. Um, unfortunately, um, it's the minimum is all we can hold people to. So I've had some success with convincing people to be environmentally conscious and a little bit more sensitive and thoughtful in their planning processes. Some say, Jeff, here's the minimum, show me where, uh, we need to do more than that. So I, I always ask, and it's always a mixed bag whether I'm successful or not.
Do any developments ever, uh, find? Do any developments ever I find opportunities to advertise, hey, we are better? Is that part of lead certification or anything like that?
The lead certification, you know, that does a lot more with buildings. Do, have I heard of a developer that, you know, wants to go above and beyond and, you know, say that this is their. Marquee site. I haven't heard about that for for quite a while. It it was big probably about fifteen years ago. You know, hey, this is, this is the store, this is what we're doing. I know in my former life, you know, working with Walmarts. You know, there were some areas where they wanted to do more of the rain gardens, the bio swales and make that a featured store. But I haven't heard about that for for a number of years now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, then I'm going to thank you for the presentation and then next step is we're going to get something to approve. Is that correct or no? We have to approve our plan, Jeff?
So the plan is already in place until in the plan year ends. February twenty eighth, Carolina, you can correct me if I'm wrong, which I know you love to do and.
As do we.
Last thing will be, there will be an annual report for how the program did for the year. And that's due to the I E P A by June one and that'll come before the board for just a review and. Approval of both the report and authorization to sign for the permit for next year.
Okay.
So that'll be probably May-ish.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you. We'll keep us moving then. Thanks, Carolina, for joining and Jeff for adding commentary there. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
And Jeff, you're still up.
All right, the engineer's report. So you get the the report in the packet and I'll just kind of highlight a few things here. First thing, the Robert Parker Coffin pathway is has been discussed. The construction is primarily complete. Yeah, we're just working on some punch list items. We are and have looked at the available land to. Add a more robust or bigger walking pad and landing area at the northwest corner of Robert Parker Coffin and eighty-three. And in talking with Greg and Rita, I think it would be best to mark that out in the field. Spray paint flags, something like that and present that in conjunction with a sketch. Which will add some some color to the discussion, so. With the snow melt today, hopefully that is sooner than later. Next, next thing on the, that'll highlight the, just to note that the Checker Road Traffic Calming. We've, we're gathering all of the additional information, more options and things like that is discussed at the last meeting. We'll have that ready for more discussion at the meeting on the twenty-second. Talked about the M F T resolution, the road program, we're in process of data collection, so we can get that out to bid. The skipping down number twelve, the water treatment plan, I'm happy to report that the flow control valve is repaired. Out there, so that is a wonderful thing, probably not so much for me, but the water operators not getting the. High pressure, high flow alarms anymore, so that's a good thing. Number fifteen on the list was the Arlington Heights Road Project is was mentioned earlier. We, the county put on their open house virtual forum about a week and a half ago. They did a really nice job with going through. The project and the details of it, just kind of a high level summary. Still proposed for a twenty twenty for construction. They anticipate that it'll go through two construction seasons. Because of the nature of the project and the length of it and usually when they say two construction seasons, there's some utility relocates involved. So. Again, this is reconstructing the pavement from Lake Cook Road to Route eighty-three. So at the meeting, the county was committed to working with Long Grove Road. On the scope of the improvements at the intersection of Arlington Heights Road and Checker, knowing the concerns there with the traffic volume. And the cut throughs over there, so. We're looking forward to working and partnering with them on that. And then the other thing that I'll, that was mentioned. Was that the Village of Buffalo Grove and the Cook County Department of Highways is. Working, they're collaborating and working on a study to review what can be done on Lake Cook Road. And that includes the intersection of Lake Cook Road and Arlington Heights Road, so that'll be a future project, not included in. The Lake County project, but there will be eyes on that going forward, so. County didn't give any speculation on the timing for that study or any improvements, but it is in process, so that's a, that's a good start.
Could I, could I ask you a question about the meeting? I don't know whether it was Anne or Rita who mentioned a turnaround because of. Where Shell and McDonald's is, could you describe, could somebody describe that, what what they're going to do?
Certainly, so the concern and the issue that the county was is trying to solve here. Is there's people that come out of McDonald's and they're on, and I believe it's Fremont Way. I could be wrong with that. Anyway, they're coming east and then they're trying to make that left turn to go north on Arlington Heights Road. And that is a perilous area. It's near.
My husband totaled a car there.
What's that?
My husband totaled a car there.
So they're, so what they're. Proposing to do is eliminate that left turn from Fremont Way to northbound Arlington Heights. And they're going to force traffic to make a right turn and go down to the next side street. So go south on Arlington Heights Road, make a U-turn and then come back north.
Wow.
They showed a video of like, they showed a video of rush hour where somebody was trying to make that left and. As you know, there's three lanes going northbound, two of them go off to fifty-three and one continues up to Thompson. They, you know, must have been like maybe where Bill totaled the car, but it is a circus. I understand. Certainly it's a problem and they, and it's too close to the other light. But i- it's going to be annoying for anybody with, they'll they'll have a dedicated left turn to do that. U-turn, but it's still anybody with a longer car or like, you know, a tradesperson's truck is going to be annoyed.
So they'd be turning into Alden and and.
Yeah.
Wow.
Oh, so wait a minute, they have to turn into the side street or can they make the U-turn and remain in Arlington Heights Road?
They can remain in Arlington Heights Road.
They can, they can stay on Arlington Heights.
They they showed it, yeah.
Okay.
But it's still, you you'll, they'll get a dedicated left, but it'll still be, you have to make a U-turn and.
Okay.
If you've got a larger vehicle, it's going to be, you can't go into the inside lane.
It seemed like it was the lesser of the evils is the way they presented it, because they had all the videos showing everything that's going on there, so. What'd you say, Bobby?
Most of us go right anyways.
Yeah.
So there's, there's something similar on Route twenty-two in Lake Zurich. If you picture where the Lake Zurich Post Office is. There's a U-turn there and where, let's see, westbound traffic makes a U-turn. The eastbound lanes are a little bit wider at that U-turn to allow bigger vehicles to make the U-turn. Is there any consideration of doing that? Making the lanes a little wider on the, it's right, northbound side of Arlington Heights Road to accommodate U-turners?
Yeah, that's. Comments are probably still open.
But I'm sure they ran their computer models with their turning movements, so we can, we can ask them for that as they contact. The the village for the coordination like with Checker, we can just ask for that and see what they can provide.
And again, a good example is Route twenty-two by the post office. The other side of Route twenty-two is the football field and Yule Township Hall.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just two more things to highlight, the sanitary sewer, the forced main replacement project by the Lake County Public Works Department. We've talked about that a little bit over the last year as far as the alignment of the sewer and things like that. I found out that the county has selected a contractor for that project and they're looking to. Get that out for construction, spring twenty twenty-two, found out earlier today that that could be as early as March. So I will certainly be. Asking for updates and get the construction schedule in as much time as we can, because that will have some traffic disruptions. Again, something that we want to make sure that we. Put out in communication form to the motorists that use that area and the residents as well.
It would be very helpful to have an idea, are we talking two weeks, six months? How how long? Because the 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 way they did eighty-three was awful. Because it never ended.
I I cannot disagree with that, so. I I H C is the contractor, they haven't provided a schedule yet, but yeah, those are all great things and. Exactly what everybody's going to want to know. And then the last thing is the Lake County Council of Mayor's has a call for projects for federal funding. Out right now, it's open until March thirty-first, so the village, and this is the same. Program that was used for a partial funding for North Kruger Road. So the village has a couple other other routes that would be eligible for this funding. Greg and I, in conjunction with some other people here are looking at the options and seeing if there's. A viable project or something that is worth pursuing, so hopefully we have that, have those conversations in the next week or two. So that we can discuss it with the board to move forward or not move forward, so that we can get the application in by the end of March, but. Let you know that that's, that's out there right now.
Yeah, Jeff, I think the thing was, because I sat in on the call. That, you know, there 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 may be more money, so, you know, because there's there's federal funding coming back in and we may end up with more money. And we may end up with more money, so the the next project on the list was Long Grove Road, right? That would be probably ready for paving. And so, because it's in it like twenty twenty-eight that it would be ready, but the funding might be come sooner, so, you know, getting our. Getting that one of these roads in queue, if the funding comes up is what we're trying to do, right? Because everyone's of all the different municipalities in Lake County are applying for funding like we got for North Kruger Road and it took forever to get North Kruger Road, right? So that's why we got to get it in, right?
So, and and we've been looking, we've been talking about Long Grove Road and we want to look out, we want to look at a couple more details on that there. There's a potential issue with the choker on Long Grove Road, so we want to see. What our limitations are. It appears that there, we we may not get funded if because of the of the fact of the choker. But we're still working through some things.
Is it only automobile vehicle roads or is it pathways and bicycle pathways be eligible?
No, it's got to, it's it's roadways and it's got to meet the federal highway standards, right? That's got to be certain width and everything else, so.
I just, I thought surface transportation was more generic.
No, but this funding is is for that, so that's what this funding is for, yeah.
Not to say there won't be other funding sources with the infrastructure bill. It's it's just not this one.
Jeff, may I ask a totally unrelated question and you'll either know it right off or not? At twenty-two and Old McHenry, there's a berm on twenty-two. And 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 we've got building plans coming for new houses right there. My question is. That berm that's there, is that in the right of way at all? Or when twenty-two is constructed, it won't touch that berm?
Off the top of my head, Bobby, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
You asked that though, too, because I was thinking about how close those houses are, right?
Yeah, well, that's, that's my thought is that in three or four years, we're going to hear from them about this horrible road that's going to come into their backyard. And and so I I just thought if we could clarify sometime soon because of the process. Where exactly those lines are.
Yeah, great point.
Yeah, so I've got the data, let me just take a quick run through it and I'll get the answer to that.
Thank you.
Not a problem. So that's the the updates that I was going to bring forward. If there's any questions, happy to. Respond to those.
If no more questions?
I have just one quick comment, Jeff. The center of Long Grove Road between fifty-three and the choker is disintegrating daily. Like all of, all along where there used to be a center yellow line, it's. It's just disappearing and I think it's every time there's a freeze thaw and the plow goes over, goes through. And we may need, you know, you might want to take a look and see if Yule Township can fill it in or something.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that to my attention.
All right. Jeff, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, anything else?
I'll say in the report and if I don't think there's too much else engineering related on the rest of the agenda and I would wish everybody a. Happy rest of the meeting, if that's okay.
Yeah, dude, it's okay to let Jeff go. No issues? All right.
Oh, let's vote on it.
All in favor? Hi. You can go, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so this one hopefully will be easy too, so you know, we have to have the joint review TIF meetings, right? So. Rich Turatt and Anne Kritzmeyer have been doing it and want to appoint them both for the eighty-three downtown. And the South Gateway TIF. To chair the joint. TIF Review Board Meetings.
Most of them approve.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by. Trustee Tanucci. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Micho. And trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. That was an interesting eye. All right, moving on, so discussion and consideration approval of a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a restated intergovernmental agreement. Between the Village of Long Grove and the Village of Mundaline for the interim planning services, and I'm sure that Village Manager Jackson has a few comments he wants to make.
When I. Now, when I, pretty simple, when I, when I came on board, this agreement had already been worked out. The dollar figure that Mundaline had quoted, the village was ten thousand eight hundred a month. I asked the board's approval to go back and renegotiate. We came to a seventy dollar an hour billing rate. And we were able to evaluate how much money was actually being spent on a monthly basis. And the agreement that myself and the village administrator from Mundaline came to. And he's presented it to their village attorney as I have to ours. Five thousand per month plus incidentals. Incidentals were included in the previous agreement and that's. Things like if we have to put a legal notification in the paper or some costs that were incurred above and beyond. The scope of of normal functions. But so we're looking at going with a five thousand dollar billing rate versus the ten thousand eight hundred based off the negotiation. And I provided the board what our current costs have been for the first six months. And I would ask the board, this is a, this is more positive fiscal impact for us than the original agreement and I would. Ask the board to approve this amended agreement.
Hey Greg, can I just ask you one question? Did you talk to them about how the pathway committee would be handled?
Are already taken care of, they have no problem supporting that.
Okay, so that'll be an additional support the pathway committee meeting when when there is, when there is one, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
What does that mean?
I would make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
It just, it didn't spell it out in the agreement, that's all, so I just asked the question.
Well, it's it's just. Well, is, is it, are we voting on the resolution twenty, twenty-two R? A, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a restated IGA?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I ask?
Please. Yeah.
So it says, the second paragraph is the duties of the planner include maintaining the village's comprehensive plan, the proposed subdivisions, conduct zoning planning, make recommendations to the board. And I, I understand those are the duties of a village planner. And do they, are they really in a position to to have that vision and background and?
There is, there is nothing that, there is nothing that is, uh, moved forward in any discussions uh, wi- without us sitting down and knows, they're not doing anything on their own. They're, uh, they, they make recommendations and say, we see this. What do you think? They've come to us with things that we've turned around and said, no, that, that doesn't work here in Long Grove and um, I, I, they're, they're not, uh, the best way I can describe this is they, they're not even close to running rogue on this. But, uh, do they have the depth of knowledge that somebody in-house would have about the day-to-day of the village? Not necessarily, no, but, but we, it's very, it's very closely monitored. We work with them on a daily basis. They are at our staff meetings. Nothing moves forward without us telling them to move it forward.
Okay. I, 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 so it, it's more of a technique, mechanical, um, supervisory thing.
Exactly.
Are we actively looking for someone to be village planner?
At, at, at this point, we put an ad in the paper and, uh, we got a number of resumes. We received a number of resumes. Uh, I would tell you that if memory serves me, at least eighty to ninety percent of those people who submitted resumes obviously didn't read the ad. And, uh, and, uh, some of the money that, uh, we had one person that applied and the money that they were looking for, we, we would have to come back to the board and talk about, uh, uh, the salary, uh, but, uh, would not have, uh, in our opinion, in my opinion, would have fit, fit well in, in our environment. So this, the candidate pool has been tough. Um, I have shared with, uh, uh, President Jacob that the services that we're getting from Mundeline right now are, um, we're exceeding expectation. I think they, they've been doing an exceptional job. The benefit we have with this is that if a planner goes on vacation, there is no gap. They've got somebody that's right there. So we've got the positions constantly filled. Plus they're doing our, our building inspections and our code violations and they have all of that joined together. Is, uh, is really serving us well and at a dollar figure. Quite honestly, that I think is, 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 uh, to benefit to the village. Also, from what I can observe so far, there was some downtime um, in that, uh, planning position and I can't speak to what Jim was doing in that time. Could have been code enforcement, could have been other things. I don't know. But there's, there's going to be low periods with a planner. There's no doubt about it because of some of the seasonality of the work. And, uh, this gives us a chance to lower our costs with that as well.
Sure.
Um, um, so I, I think it, I think it merits us to continue to evaluate it, but never never say this is the way we're going to go and, and this is it forever. We just continue to evaluate it. But I think staff would, uh, staff would support that, uh, we're pretty satisfied with the work product we've been getting from them at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
This, it looks like you're going to say something.
Yeah, just corollary to trustee O'Connor's question. Um, you know, I had the same question on what we're doing with our planner, but I also think about the number, are the dollars that we're spending with our village engineer on some of these road maintenance projects? And I'm wondering if we took a look at how much we're spending on Jeff to kind of babysit, if you will, the, uh, the road maintenance crews, construction crews and combine that with the money that we would be paying a planner if we don't have an argument to put, you know, somebody on staff full-time to do both those functions. And, uh, make that, um, financially, uh, and maybe practically, uh, beneficial. But again, I don't know if any of that makes sense. It's a random thought, but I just throw it out there.
Happy, happy to look at it. Absolutely happy to look at.
You know, cause some of the stuff Jeff does, I mean, you know, it's road maintenance stuff. Go out and make sure they're doing it properly, right? I think we could hire a lot of people to do that, maybe.
Bobby, Bobby, did you have something too?
Yes, I, I wanted to ask, um, does Mundeline go to the planning committee, the, the, um, architectural? And, and I realize it's easy with Zoom, but once we're, we're live, will they be attending also?
Yes, they've, they, that part of the agreement is they, they, they attend every meeting where, uh, PC, all the ones that are listed in that agreement. The last meeting, uh, and even though you're right, trustee O'Reilly was a Zoom meeting, myself and staff, uh, from Mundeline were at that last meeting. So, um, they're committed to make every one of those meetings.
Okay.
I just wanted to add an opinion. I think, um, thank you for doing this and thank you for keeping an eye on the, on the fiscal bottom line. I think it makes a lot of sense for them to do the implementation. I would not be comfortable with them setting a vision for us, but I'm really glad that they're bringing things forward and they're not just being quiet and doing what is told. They're actually saying, hey, we see this, but we understand if it doesn't fit. So you know, whatever the reconfiguration is, I think it, I think I'm glad that it's integrated with the, um, inspections. But that they're not, somebody who isn't our staff, isn't driving the strategic direction and the comprehensive plan. So I a reconfiguration that splits those would make some sense to me, but like trustee Barowski, I don't know what I don't know. So.
And it's, I, I would offer this, it's, uh, been five months, uh, since things, I'm sorry, it's, oh, six months now since uh, this engagement has, uh, been executed. And there's still some feeling out of things. Okay. What do we do here? What do we do there? But I, I, I was, uh, I was skeptical at first as well, uh, doing an intergovernmental agreement for this, something that's so important to our village. And, uh, but again, I'm pretty satisfied, uh, uh, pleasantly surprised at how well it's going, going, but it doesn't mean we, we don't stop evaluating going forward to your point.
Trustee Kritzmeyer, do you still want to make a motion?
Absolutely. I, I move that we approve the resolution authorizing a restated intergovernmental agreement between Long Grove and the village of Mundeline for planning services.
Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer. I think, uh, trustee Micho beat you.
Yep.
Yep. Moved by, uh, seconded by trustee Micho.
Oh, here comes the cat.
Mine have been all over today and my, and my son came without warning too. So it's one of those nights, Bobby.
Well, well, I, I don't know. I, I did point out to Jenny the photo, uh, the, the, the look of that cat at last meeting and, and she's getting ready to do it again. Where she puts her eyes right over the edge and it's, and it's looked, it's like all the children's book, um, where's Waldo? If that's who, who it looks like.
All right. On that note, it's, uh, Michelle, can you take the roll call?
Uh, trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Waldo says aye.
Rusty O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Um, the next time the agenda is, is, uh, some changes we want to make to our um, liquor code, right? To, to give us, uh, some, um, abilities to take some actions if, if need be. And I don't know if Vic or Greg wants to do any highlights on this, but I think, uh, everyone's aware of what's, uh, what's in the, um, what's in the amended, uh, code there in the resolution. So does anyone have any questions or Vic want to make any comments?
It's almost like, why didn't we do it this way? I mean, you know, asking for good standing seems like a no-brainer.
Oh, a- as a non-home rule municipality, we are required to, uh, toe the line of what the state liquor code says. Um, and so that is what our code has traditionally reflected. Uh, we do have authority to, uh, elaborate on things so long as they're consistent with the state law. And, uh, the unique circumstances that, uh, gave rise to this are what also prompted the, uh, the modification here. So I, I think that as a traditional matter, uh, for non-home municipalities, you simply adopt the standards in the liquor code as we have. Um, and I would think that but for our unique circumstances, there probably wouldn't have been much reason to do otherwise, but, uh, you know, when you have, uh, situations, you try to address them best you can.
There's no questions? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Don't move.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Connor. Seconded by seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. At the last meeting, we had a long discussion about, uh, pool covers versus, uh, fences. And so I think we all aligned on, or maybe not everyone, we weren't a hundred percent unanimous, but we aligned on, uh, amending our our village ordinances to allow the, uh, let's see, is to allow the maintenance code regarding swing pool enclosures and safety covers. What is, what do we allow here? We're admitting the long growth property maintenance code regarding swimming pool and enclosures and safety covers. Is that what it is? Is that what we're doing?
Essentially what, if you remember, the conflict is that our code say the, the stricter applies. And so we, we have the one code which says fences, the other one that says the hard cover. What we've done is changed the maintenance code to say that if, uh, that, that the fences are required, but if someone meets the SPA standards for the hard cover, then, uh, there will be an exception from the fencing. Uh, one of the other things that we've also done in this code or in this code amendment uh, is to make clear that, uh, having those protective devices while important, uh, isn't enough. You have to make sure that you're, you're not purposefully or otherwise negligently leaving them, uh, unoperational. And so we have put in, uh, a provision that allows us to enforce if someone is failing to, to make use of those protective coverings.
Yeah, I really like those sections. As you may recall, I, in the last meeting, preferred the passive safety of a fence over a, a safety cover. But with these, with this exact wording of the ordinance, I've changed my mind. I, I support this the way it's written. That's very good.
Well, you know, and I did look up what this ASTM code is and it's, uh, four hundred and eighty-five pounds is what it was.
And you can't get through gaps on the edge of the cover either.
Yeah. Go ahead. I'm sorry, somebody, was that Ian?
My, my only question is by linking it to that particular standard, do, do we, um, create planned obsolescence? That was my only, no problem with, uh, with it as written. It's just, do we create something that we have to keep updating?
Well. Standards change?
We, we do typically revisit the standard codes. Um, they're, they're generally updated every three years. Um, I don't think that we have been, uh, always with the latest code. I think we've always made sure that we are one or two versions behind. Uh, and, and that's just the, the, the manner in which the, the village has been doing this. Uh, I, I would say many communities don't want to be on the cutting edge of the new codes only because uh, there's a little bit of comfort to see how they've actually worked out, uh, in practice. Um, so my expectation is that, uh, at some point we will be in probably in coordination with Mundeline if they're looking at theirs and we're still working with them as, uh, code enforcement. We'd probably be revisiting our codes to do an update, but we have periodically done it. Um, we don't need to do it in terms of the planned obsolescence. It's not necessarily planned, but I think that, um, it's, it's a customary thing to revisit these from time to time because the code standards do change.
It sounds like full employment for village attorneys.
Uh, no, probably for building inspectors. They're the ones that come up with.
Wait, does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Bill, you do have a, a hand raised. I'm not sure.
Oh, who, who raised her hand? I'm sorry.
Uh, there's a Jim W. on the, uh, on the screen.
Uh, why is he cut off? Jim, I see. Okay, Jim, do you have something for us? Jim? I don't see, is he still there? No, your hand's raised. Go ahead, Jim. Yeah, we can't hear you.
No, I'm not hearing.
Jim, we can't hear you.
I think we may have just, oh no, there he is.
I can't hear you.
You're muted.
Do you have a master mute on everybody?
No, I don't.
Now, now we hear you.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Uh, before you, uh, make the motion here, what, what prompted this, uh, if I may ask, what prompted this amendment?
Oh, what prompted it? So we, because we renewed our code, there's some pools in uh, throughout Long Grove that have these covers and no fences. And, um, a resident came forward and, um, you know, basically had a larger lot and, and asked us, you know, we don't want to put a fence up. Can we just use one of these covers instead? So a resident asked us to do it and we discussed it and um, there was some ambiguity in our two codes, uh, the, the one for the spa and the one for the pool. And so we went ahead and, and, uh, supported that, that, that resident and made this change, but we still, we have some pools on the, in, in Long Grove that just have covers on them and no fences.
Is that now used talking about during the winter or are you talking about all summer as well?
All summer. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, is there a fence requirement in Long Grove at this point?
There is, yeah.
Okay.
There is now.
Why do so, as of when?
Uh, whenever the code was amended, it was a number of years ago, the code got amended.
We went back and looked, I think that we went as far back as twenty thirteen and we found that that's been the case. Uh, my, my guess is that it might've been there for longer periods of time, but at least since twenty thirteen, we didn't do a deeper dive.
Okay. Is there a grandfather clause on that?
There is not.
Pools that were built, um, then why are there so many pools around the community that don't have fences?
I, I think that was part of what the village board discussed last time, that, that, that there are some exceptions from the fence requirement. And those are the pools that have the hard covers already. The proposed amendment is to do that.
Vic, did you mistake? He asked, was there a grandfather? And I think in a sense there was, we did not go retroactive when that, those change. There's no retroactive on it, any of this.
Well, no, the, the maintenance code is you have to maintain. So that's a current, uh, provision code. That's not one that is like a zoning code that if you did it before, you're okay. Um, and so under the maintenance code, if you are not currently, uh, in compliance, then you have an obligation to, to bring it up to compliance.
So there is a grant.
Yeah, why do you ask?
You're asking me?
Yeah.
Um, because I'm without a fence and this is a big expense that now I'm going to have to incur this year.
No, you're not going to.
No, 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 that's exactly what we corrected.
Yeah, we corrected it. You don't have to incur a fence. We're saying if you don't have a fence, you don't need to put one up. That's what we're doing.
Provided you have the hard cover.
Provided you have that hard cover. So you're good.
During the summer, which I don't, which I don't have. So what you're saying is if I don't have the hard cover, hard cover during the summer, I do have to put up a fence.
Well, hold on a second. How do you secure your pool when you're not home?
We're home all the time. We have video cameras and everything else. So I mean, that's, that's not really an issue.
It won't stop a toddler from falling in.
From a coach. You know, like I said, there's, there's a lot of pools throughout Long Grove and that's why I asked my first question is what prompted this? And it sounds like a neighbor who was putting in a new pool or somebody somewhere, you know, wants to do a hard cover instead of a fence.
No, well, yeah, correct. They want to do a hard cover instead of a fence. Right. Yeah.
Right.
I, I think our thinking is it's either or.
No, I, I do understand. I do understand. And, and it, and that pertains to both pools and spas.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Um, are you going to allow for any amount of time for this to be, uh, enacted or, or, you know, to be in effect before people get fined?
I, I don't want to speak for the board, but I would say that I don't think that we have the staff that is actively uh, searching out violations.
I understand.
Um, you know, I think that this is a safety issue though, and one thing that a, a person needs to be mindful of is that if something tragic were to occur and you're in violation of a code, um, that would likely be per se liability.
Yep. No, I totally understand that. I totally understand that. All right. That's all I needed to ask.
No, thanks for asking. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks. Thanks for your time.
Thanks. All right. So who, who made the motion? Sorry.
I, I don't have any indication of a motion yet. Michelle, do you?
I think it was, uh, trustee Kritzmeyer.
Trustee Kritzmeyer, you made the motion to approve?
Yes.
Want to make a motion to approve? How about that? We'll start over. Want to make a motion to approve? How about that? We'll start over.
Motion to approve.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
Second.
By trustee Michelle. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Michelle.
Hi.
Trustee Barowski.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
And trustee Tenucci.
Just before I vote, I wanted to note that the ordinance refers to the cover as a safety cover, not a hard cover. And that fact will become important later on when we review the meeting minutes. So just keep that in mind. And I'm voting aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion.
And, and that was, that's my shorthand for the, for the safety cover.
Okay.
All right, we're going to keep moving along. We're into the, we moved to the village president and trustee reports. The only thing that I have to report on is I attended, I want to say it was January 28th, the second Route 53 Task Force meeting. I, I, you know, it was interesting because really what, what it was, it was IDOT, Lake County Forest Reserve, Lake County Stormwater Management, they reserved from their perspective, the property in those areas. There, there was some concern. In fact, I've asked Greg to, to drop a map that has our zoning and includes our comprehensive plan in there. Because one of the things that the state did, I didn't realize it, as they, as they got started, is they actually showed that they owned our soccer field on their map. So I've actually made a comment on that, you know, as, but they were kind of, they were kind of talking about that property and how that, well, I don't know if we want to give that up because, you know, you could exit Route 53 and then kind of continue through that soccer field up into 53, and it would relieve some of the congestion on, you know, the intersection of 53 and Lake Cook Road. There were some other parts that, you know, it's just interesting to have, have them talk. The big parcel that's where I live, I don't, they think that they were talking about, well, you know, there's some of that that we could use for additional lanes on Midlothian, which may make sense if they ever widen, you know, the intersection, but also it, it seemed to suggest that they could use it for wetlands and so forth. And you know, so it, it's, you know, it, it was an interesting meeting. So far, we really haven't, us mayors haven't had a chance to talk. They're all, you know, it's all these different government organizations talking. At the end of the meeting was very concerning because Linda Soto brought in the tri-county access study that they spent, whatever it was, 25 million out and said, well, we should use some of that. And she started talking about buses. And that was during public comment at the end. So I'm not sure where we're headed yet. But this last meeting, I wasn't, I don't know, I didn't just, it, it got me all concerned, you know, so.
Could you clarify what you mean or what they mean by reserve?
Yeah, I mean, what, what he was saying was that we, we've bought this land. So is, we're considering what to do with it, the uses for it. If we decide to do something, we may not want to give up the land because we would have to rebuy it back, right? So so, so, you know, in some of the areas, it may make sense to hold on to, you know, reserve it or whatever, or hold on to it for road expansion in certain areas. Some of it may make sense, right? If you're trying to widen Midlothian by on your way down to Route 8360 there, and you already own the land, why would you give it up, right? You may want to hold on to it.
This is the state speaking?
The state was speaking, right? So this, the IDOT spoke?
The toll authority.
No, it was IDOT. It was IDOT. Lake County, and it was Lake County Stormwater Management. So it was Lake County Forest Reserve spoke, the Lake County Forest Reserve spoke about, they highlighted all the ecological areas that, that are in there and concern for those areas. The Lake County Stormwater Management took, highlighted the areas from a a stormwater management perspective where water naturally flows, this, you know, the different flood plains, et cetera, wetlands and stuff in the area. IDOT was just saying, you know, we, we own this land. And, you know, as you're thinking about what to, what alternative uses are for the land, realize that some of it could be to use for roads. We may not want to totally give that up.
So they look at it as an option that they hold that still has value to them.
Right. Could have value. And that's what they're highlighting to the.
Of course, they could also reissue Route 80 or Route 53 all the way up to 120, too.
Right, right.
Reserve it.
That's a, that's beating a dead horse.
Yeah, could you?
Hey, you know what? I've been involved in this road for 45 years. Never say never.
I, IDOT approaches this from the perspective of people who do nothing but build roads every day.
Well, that's what they were saying 20 years ago, too.
Well, they tend to.
It doesn't matter what I think or what you think. It's what they think and what's reality. So I, I, I look at it with caution.
They, they seem to forget, though, that they bought it with taxpayer money.
Yep. No, I know. So, I mean, it was, it was just interesting. So I mean, what I asked Greg to do, and Greg's going to do is, is to take a map of Long Grove and then plot in there over the state-owned property, our zoning. And then also our comprehensive plan. You know, where the, we have those subareas, right? In particular, the biggest one is, you know, is up north by me, right? That's, and, and when you look at it, that's the biggest parcel the state owns. It's pretty much our whole subarea one, I think it is, right? The whole area.
Yep.
So at least we have that to, to give as part of this commission, you know?
But it's, it's pretty well known and discussed online and offline that they're, the, the biggest thing they're looking at right now, hence Linda Soto's performance, is the 120 bypass.
And she's up that way. She lives up that way, too. And she's part of the PACE. She's an executive director of PACE Bus or something, right? PACE Bus Network. So when she started talking about buses, and I'm like, oh, wait, wait, what, what are we talking about buses for this area here, right? I mean, I didn't get it, so.
Well, it was a prepared speech to be on record.
Oh, I see. I see. Did you listen to the replay then, right? Yeah. Yeah. So that's all I have on it. They're trying to schedule another one. We'll just, I don't know where we're headed, right? It seems like.
Is, is there a, a, a date by which a report or a conclusion?
Yeah, is it the end of the calendar year? I have to pull it up. End of the calendar year, I think it is. Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. And, but the latest is they're, they're developing these subcommittees. And Senator Bush invited Linda Soto to be a member of one of those.
Right.
So, anyway. Politics.
They have to have what? I think it's four meetings per the
Right.
resolution. So we're now had two. So obviously, it's going to be more than four meetings.
And they have, they have to come up with, with alternatives. You know, that's, that's the goal. And they don't have much time left, really. So.
All right, that's the end of my report. Trustee Barowski?
Nothing to report.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Nothing this time.
Okay, yeah, and we'll get back to you on the pay warrant. Trustee O'Connor?
Nope.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Nope.
Trustee Michelle?
I do have something to report. I think you all got notification that LinkedIn is up. So it's the soft opening. A few things are up there. If you've got a LinkedIn account, please go on and like our posts and share them and comment. And we're trying to get the word out. And if you have any suggestions for content, please share them with myself or the staff. And we're going to be doing, taking a lot of the content that we have. We're already putting out with the e-newsletters and just kind of doing them piecemeal. But we're also going to be working on some new content. So that's original. So.
Is there a target for how often?
We're kind of feeling that out right now. But I think, what did she say? Three to five a week?
About three times a week, but it, it just depending on what dictates. And again, this is the soft launch. We figure, we, we estimated about 30 days before we were able to go to a stronger, hard launch. But you know, and I appreciate the board's input. Various board members have given input as as it relates, and they've also signed up for LinkedIn. So that's much appreciated. Gives us a sense of a direction to some extent.
There would be a good spot to highlight the new businesses, right? Like the fish, the fish place that just opened.
We, we're looking at what's the best approach to do that, to be equitable to all of our businesses, but certainly announcing new businesses in the community is something that we're looking at. Yep.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's what the EDC does, or, you know, is hype new businesses, bring in new business and that kind of thing, right? So.
Bring and retain. Yep.
Yeah. So that's pretty much it. We're working on the focus and of the EDC, and it was a good meeting. So, end of report.
Thank you. Trustee Tenucci?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. You know, I should ask village manager Jackson if he has a report while, while we're here.
There is. I wasn't prepared for, to give a formal report, but there's a number of projects going on that I've listed out to kind of get a sense of where we're at on it and where we are on timelines. I'm happy to share that with the board. I'll send the board a copy of that. We are busier than a one-armed paper hanger, as my dad used to say. It, it, with, with the various projects going on, we did, I did have conversation with trustee O'Reilly and then could have conversation with trustee Tenucci about taking a look at Village Hall and the footprint of Village Hall and to see what the future of how that will look. But again, we're, we're working on a, a number of projects. The employee manual edit, I think I would like to bring that to the board, the first meeting in March. There are some items in that manual that I'm, especially as it addresses certain benefits and time that I would like the board to take a look at. So I'm not making a unilateral decision, which I think is certainly inappropriate, but but anyway, we're, we're getting a lot of good work done and a lot of things are going to be getting in front of the board, including the RFP for IT services, the RFP for water sewer, with a consultant or a, a third party taking a look at that to make sure that everything's included on that. So we're busy.
Thank you. Alman, in March 19th is the village board workshop.
Yes.
Is Michelle aware of that, too? I forgot to ask you that.
I, I think I CC'd Michelle on the email today.
Yes.
Okay.
I received it. Yeah.
Are you good for that date, too?
I think so. Yeah.
Okay, good. I forgot to ask. Sorry, Craig, I just thought of it now. So.
I, absolutely.
All right. Well, good. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, we have the next item on the agenda. It's the approval of the January 2022 pay warrant. I do have one question, though, is, and I should have asked you this before. I just see my stickers. What are we holding back on Stempel? We're holding something back, right?
It's already held back. It's 10, 10, 10% until, until the job's complete. That's correct.
Yeah, so there's, so that's 90% is what's, we're paying there, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And it always comes with Greg, I mean, not Greg, Jeff and Gaylord Hamilton formally writing a recommendation.
Okay. Any, does anyone have, anyone have questions on the?
I have a question.
We finally spent some money on snow removal.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Kent.
And I think that's exactly what I'm going to talk about. Art Fleet Service, that's the snow removal company, is that right?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
What is SR Center? That's a location where they work.
I have to look at the code key. I'm still going through the public roads, which ones are being done, which ones aren't being done, still getting, I, I have to look at that, but I can get that back to you, trustee.
I was just wondering. SR looks like senior, senior center. I don't think we have any senior centers that we plow. I was just curious what that, not urgent, I was just curious what it was.
Okay, Bobby.
Regarding snow removal, because we're, this is our, our first, I think this is our first full year of doing the downtown. Do we have an idea of what it's costing each, each time we have a snowfall?
We can, we can absolutely, the way they're breaking it down and, and what we've started to ask them, including Denise and I, now are asking, how much salt are you using per, per mile? We're trying to get our arms around salt, salt costs. We can break down what the cost is to the downtown based on how they lay it out.
It would be, it would be useful, I think, because I think downtown ought to know, they're getting a, a nice little benefit from the village that others aren't.
And, and I'm, I'm almost confident those numbers are readily available, so it wouldn't take us long to put it together.
They're right in, they're in there. I'm looking at them right now. Yeah.
Yeah, they, I will just say, I think you guys had a conversation with, last year, we definitely asked them to break it out with the new downtown and the sidewalks and everything. If you, when you looked at the actual invoices, it looked almost formulaic, but I know that Greg and Denise have been having much more regular conversations with them. So you guys speak to that. But in the, last year, the invoices came in more, like you could see, every snowfall cost us X. And they would just divide out and say, I don't know, 20% of X went to the downtown. But I could probably have a better sense now.
The reason I ask is that from my new perch, the activity that goes on because of snow is just amazing. So I think that they, they should know that, that, that we work hard at, at, at taking care of them.
And they've done.
I already counted five, $5,000 for sidewalks, and I'm missing one. So that's, you know, that's an expense we never had before.
And they've done, they've done a pretty good job of, I had one phone call about Stempel, but, and it was, are we sure they're going to be there in time? And sure enough, they were. And they've done a really, really good job on making sure Stempel's accessible for, for the traffic for the businesses. Denise and I had had conversations beginning on Friday over the weekend for fear of another snowfall regarding salt usage and putting a formula together on how many tons of, or how many tons of salt are used on how many road miles, making sure that when we're purchasing salt, I, you know, I, I try to err on the side of us and, and make sure that our salt's not being used someplace else and that we're not just purchasing salt without accountability for it.
Yeah, there's more for the sidewalks. Those sidewalks are costing a lot. It's interesting. Wow. Okay. I'd be curious. Yeah. It's all there. The data's all there, though. It may not be 100% accurate, but better than nothing. So. Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Most of them have.
I have a question on the, or with the minutes.
We're not, but we're not at the minutes yet. So.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, so moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by
Second.
Seconded by trustee Michelle. Roll call, please, Michelle. Thank you.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Michelle.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tenucci.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, so now it's for the, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the board meeting minutes for the January 25th, 2022 meeting. Rita, take us, take us, take it away.
Just one thing. It, I, it says village resident Allison Lucassio indicated she preferred the choker on Checker. I, my memory, somebody tell me if I'm wrong, is that she wanted one on Schaefer and Checker.
I originally had Schaefer, and I changed it to Checker when I re-listened, so maybe.
Well, she, I think, well, my memory is that her husband and she wanted one on Schaefer. And I remember thinking, well, they lived at the corner of Schaefer and Checker. So that's my memory. You know, I, I don't know if anybody else remembers or not.
You know, I can go, I can go back and listen.
Yeah, can we approve it and then have it amended based on the recording? Is that okay?
Sure. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, well, just, so I mean, we can, we can approve it with, we'll have Michelle go re-listen to the recording, recording, and if it matches, fine. If not, she'll make the correction.
Yeah, I think Rita was right, though.
Okay.
And then, I have something on item eight that I alluded to earlier. And it makes two references to a hard cover, referring to the swing pool cover. I actually don't know what was said in the meeting, but I do know the correct term is safety cover, not hard cover.
Yep.
I believe.
I, I am confident, I said.
I I am confident I said hard cover, but safety cover is appropriate for the minute.
Yeah. So I can go ahead and change that as well.
All right, does somebody want to make a um motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Don't move. Don't move.
Okay, move by uh trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee Micho. I'm sorry.
That was O'Connor.
Seconded by trustee uh Micho.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
He's there, but out of the room. Um. Should we give it a second or?
The minutes will pass anywhere with the vote we have, so if we wanted to continue, if she comes back in time, we can ask, but.
Well, let's see what else we have on the agenda. We don't have any.
Well, we still have a vote for trustee Tanucci.
Yes.
Tanucci.
Aye.
Oh, okay, sorry, yep.
Wow, Vic really paced it.
Oh, he's back.
Okay, so um we're voting.
Bobby is back, guy.
Yeah, we we just took a vote on the meeting minutes, um, and we just need your vote as a nominee. Okay, yes, okay, motion carried. Thank you. Uh. I guess we don't have any reason to go into executive session. Uh, any other business? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can I just ask something? Vic, what happens if uh the news report this this evening about the potential of lifting the ma mask and indoor mandate by the governor? Uh, does that? The governor potentially lifting the mandate? That that was on the news this evening?
Yeah, I I mean, we're still in the position that if the board chooses to uh meet remotely, it can. Um, the govern the only thing that the governor has to do with our decisions to meet remotely or not is uh issue the disaster proclamation. What he says in it is really irrelevant as to that determination. It actually devolves onto the board.
Okay. All right, yep, um. It's still in place, so we have the ability to meet our next. In our next meeting remotely, so if we choose to do so, so. It may make still sense to do that one more time yet, so. So anyways, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Okay, uh, move by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer.
Okay, trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Our motion carried. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
You're welcome, everybody. Good night.
Good night.